All right, thank you all for coming to the Library Board of Trustees meeting for September 17th. We're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. David Zucker. Buddy Harden.
Present.
Richard Gartner. Cindy Giordano.
Here.
Justin Collier.
Here.
Matthew Seads.
Here.
Renee Tillman.
Here.
Thank you. That's exciting. So, we, obviously, due to the availability of the trustees tonight, we are going to only accomplish one thing, hopefully, the public hearing for the tax rate and then the setting of that tax rate. I will entertain a motion to suspend the regular agenda in order to hold a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the setting of the fiscal year 25 tax rate for the library.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Motion's approved. We'll now open the public hea-- I need a motion to open the public hearing for the fiscal year tax rate. I have a motion. Oh. The public hearing is on the tax rate item.
I make a motion to open public hearing on the fiscal year 25 tax rate.
I make a motion to open a public hearing for the setting of the FY 25 tax rate for the library.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. It's a roll call vote. Roll call vote, sorry.
Harden.
Hi.
Giordano.
Yes.
Collier.
Yes.
Seads.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Did we lose?
She's getting one, I think.
Okay. Hey, here's one right here.
Robin.
All right, I guess Jason will kick it off with you first, or you want to do Julie? How would you like to handle this?
Oh, we speak first, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought we were doing public comment first. Julie, can you talk?
Excuse me.
Now it's competition.
Before going into the full process, I just wanted to make a comment that we did post the notice of public hearing for the required seven days, so that's all I wanted to say before we actually get into the process, unless you wanted to stop through that.
No, go ahead.
Did you have something to say?
No.
So does this need to be-- are we holding the public portion of this before we actually go into the details, or?
If you want to provide us information on how we came about to this tax rate, I mean, this one's a little easier because it's, you know, the maximum allowed, but also it's, and it's the same thing as what we budgeted for, right, with our proposed tax rate, but if you can kind of just give an idea or a quick analysis of what came up with, how we came up with the tax rate, and then that will help individuals who may have comments in the public, then when they address us, it's an idea.
Sure. I can do that. So, as you stated, this process started back in March. That is when we did a projection, and that was based on the preliminary property values that was provided, that were provided to us. And with that, we projected the rate at point 1728. Since that time, we received certification of, certification of the St. Charles County property tax rolls, which is included in your packet. That's the Board of Equalization approval. So those values were placed in summary form in the notice of public hearing, so it gives you an easier view year to year from 2023 to 2024, what the property value change looks like. Overall, it was really a small number. We haven't seen this number in quite a few years, and that's 1.32%. So, with that being said, the final property tax rolls were forwarded to the Missouri State Auditor, and they use that property tax information in the pro forma that was included in your packet. So, I included a setting of tax rate, pretty much an outline of what's done. I think what's notable is that the Consumer Price Index that's used by the Missouri State Auditor is the 3.4%. In recent history, we've had a high rate of inflation. Obviously, that's come down quite a bit. The Hancock Amendment, excuse me, dictates that our revenues can't increase more than the lesser of inflation or 5%. So, 5% had been used in the past few years, but this again reflects the 3.4%. So, using that and the fact that new construction is not included, the State Auditor determined that the maximum ta-- sorry, the maximum tax rate is 0.1728. So, do you have any questions about the process? I apologize.
I feel bad now if I do.
I was, I was okay. I was perfectly okay, and all of a sudden I started coughing.
I think it's important to note, as you mentioned, for those that are following online or emails that we've received, you know, we, the county voters authorized a certain amount, and there is a, there is a state law that prohibits us from going to the maximum amount, which is why we, we're not allowed to do that. And I've seen a couple comments come through our emails asking why we're not asking for more funds, and that's, that's the reason why we're not.
So, so that is true. So at one time, our rate was 0.2600. So, when, each year when the State Auditor was making this calculation pursuant to the Hancock Amendment, they look at the total revenue increase, so as not to overburden the taxpayer. So, they in essence back into what that rate would be to be the cap. So, it went from the 0.2600 as it had been, it's like, and over time has gradually worked its way back down to 0.1728, which is significant.
And, and you said it was the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is less?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. And they're using 3.4% as the rate of inflation currently?
There. The Consumer Price Index, the CPI.
Okay. We'll have another opportunity for the board to ask any questions related to this, but I'm going to go ahead and open the floor up to the public for any questions or comments that you all have regarding the tax rate. If you'd like to, there's a microphone over here. Just approach the microphone and state your name and your comments, and we'll proceed forward. Looks like we have Mr. Deanoff approaching.
We sent that up for very tall person.
Yeah, just listen. I think it's, oh, there you go, perfect.
Thank you very much, members of the Board of Directors. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deanoff, county public advocate. A couple issues I'd like to start out. First of all, Mr. Chairman, you know that there's a state law on court cases, it's state public hearings, there's no time limit. Are we on the same page?
That's correct.
Cool. So I'll be about four or five minutes here, but I wanted to bring two things to the awareness of both the district and the community. New state laws passed in 2023 and 2024 state legislative session, and also a ordinance passed by the St. Charles County Council about, over a year ago, provide senior citizens that are 62 years of age or over can freeze their property taxes for real estate. And so, it's not going to have much effect in this year because we're at the height, but if we ever have a downturn in the economy or something that goes awry with real estate like we experienced in 2008, or I believe 2000 and maybe 12, 13, somewhere in there, there will be a down, if there's a downturn in the economy, it could yield less revenue in concerning ramifications for not only the Library District, but all special taxing districts and political subdivisions as a whole. In addition, for senior citizens that are unaware, there is a state law that you can apply through a form with the Missouri Department of Revenue. It's entitled Tax Credit Claim that gives credit to senior citizens and disabled Missourians who need some tax relief. So I just wanted to make that known. Getting into the real estate and personal property tax levy that's proposed by Ms. Wolf, the Chief Financial Officer, first of all, there's, there appears to be errors and issues in the reporting information to the State Auditor and the worksheets, and also information given to the Board of Trustees. If you look at the St. Charles County Certification of St. Charles County Property Tax Rolls after the Board of Equalization hearings, it states agriculture in the amount of $62,603, which really seems like a low amount because of the county takes in countywide, and we have a pretty good size agricultural district and agricultural areas. In Ms. Wolf's worksheet and disclosure for preliminary approval to the Missouri State Auditor, if you go to that worksheet, it doesn't talk about, anything about agriculture, and if you go to the further worksheet provided to the Board of Trustees entitled Tax Assessment Income Based on Assessment Valuation Comparison for Fiscal Year 2025, September 2024, No Change in Tax Rate, it states real estate, also personal property, but it doesn't have a category for agricultural. And so I just want to make sure you as trustees can ask Ms. Wolf if agricultural has been included in the collection by the county collector for our city-county Public Library District to make sure that we capture and gain those, those revenues, because in all other political subdivisions that I've been testifying on public hearings for the tax levy, those public subdivisions have a category for agriculture. And if you go to the Missouri State Auditor or call the Missouri State Auditor, the person in charge of the worksheets, I believe his name is Christopher, his last name starts with a B, it skips my memory, but I did reach out to him today for that worksheet, and the good principles and practices as suggested by the State Auditor's office asked for a category to include revenues and taxes on the agricultural. And that I don't see anywhere in the worksheet provided to the State Auditor or the worksheet that was provided for the summary to the Board of Trustees, and that's very concerning to me. This is a non-assessment year, so there should be little to no change. We as accounting and region are finally starting to see a decrease in value of vehicles and personal property, which would be, i.e., motorcycles, boats, trailers, farm equipment. That's finally starting to come down. And, you know, a comment that I've got, I begged the Board of Trustees, the previous Board of Trustees, for at least the last five years, including our director, Mr. Cool, to create a special deposit account and place into this account all new revenues from newly occupied construction of both residential and commercial that grows each and every year. This account will be used for future construction of new library facilities in our increasing, growing county population that happens each and every week, and we are over 433 residents. That's very important, and I think we need to start that fund. We need to, I think we could pay for it without a tax revenue on the shoulders and the backs of citizens. Now, that new construction growth yields in terms of new investment to the, to the Library District, $177,557,681 for new construction, both residential and commercial, on real estate. Personal property, it gains the, the new residential construction, $5,700, I'm sorry, personal property, $5,715,298 for a total combined new assets of $183,272,000. And so, I ask that that money be put in a special account so we can start growing that and earning interest on that. In this challenging economy with inflation and rising costs, taxpayers deserve relief. As St. Charles County residents are paying currently, 53% of all their income into their households go to pay either a tax or a fee at the federal government, the state government, county government, municipal government, for over 4,500 special districts across our state, which would be ambulance districts, fire districts, sewer districts, water districts, sanitary districts, library district, community college, school districts, which is majority of the tax bill. And so, to sum it up, I would like to recommend to the Board of Trustees for the general fund for the tax levy in fiscal year 2025, which will be collected by the county collector, I'm sorry, it would be fiscal year 2024, collected by our county collector in December. My recommendation is 0.1700 per 100 assessed valuation. So I'm taking off basically 0.28 of 1 cent and give some relief to taxpayers on 100 assessed evaluation. I appreciate you hearing my comments. I, hopefully, you will decrease the tax leviness and recommendation by the Chief Financial Officer. And I'm also very concerned about the agricultural not being included and disclosed to the Board of Trustees. That's very concerning that it's not on the worksheet and that it's not on the information provided to the Board of Trustees. It's a key category for revenue across our state to all political subdivisions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Deanoff. I will direct your attention to the worksheet you were just mentioning with the 62,000 on that page. You said 62,000 for agriculture?
Are you talking about from the county?
Yeah, Certification of the St. Charles County Property Tax Rolls After Board of Equalization. You see that? If you look up five lines from that, it says agriculture, $24,96,951. We lump all of our real estate together in one line. So when you go back to the page that you were mentioning, didn't see it on the tax assessment income based on assessment valuation comparison, if you look at that number for real estate for fiscal year 2025 assessed value, it's $11 billion, 39 million. That actually matches the almost total real estate piece of combining all that together.
It's all combined in one category.
It's all combined into one line.
I just would ask the board for future years, all other political subdivisions across our county and across our state have an agricultural category, and I would ask that we separate that out. And those are also the best practices and the recommendations of the State Auditor, and I don't understand why we're not following those best practices. That's, that's my concern. I think we, more disclosure, more public information, I think is better for the public.
Thank you for the comments. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next.
Good evening. My name is Brian Rorda. I'm St. Peters resident. For too long, the Hancock Amendment and our own inaction has restricted this library, restricted its growth. We've seen the cost this past year. We have seen our librarians have their pay withheld, reduced. We're still struggling to resolve all that. We have seen our hours cut at this library over the past few years. We still, as a county, would like those back. We, I will again call for a tax rate increase. In the short term, obviously, I would like you to approve the maximum allowable amount. Long term, I would still like to see a tax rate increase. This county deserves better. We should be able to support everything we ask. We've let this go for far too long. We have failed to support this library system, and we as a county have paid that cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rora. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Our Trustee Harden. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second.
Multiple seconds. All right. Is there any other further discussion? If there's discussion related to the tax rate, we can bring that up as soon as we get to the next item related to setting the tax rate, so just FY, there's another opportunity for you all to speak up. All right, hearing no other discussion, all of those, is this a roll call?
It is.
All right, we'll do a roll call.
Buddy Harden.
Yes, hi.
Justin Collier.
Yes.
Cindy Giordano.
Yes.
Renee Tillman.
Yes.
Matthew Seads.
Yes. The motion passes, and the public hearing is now closed. I will entertain a motion to bring forward the agenda item 24, or sorry, 25-14 to, next on the agenda. Is there a motion to move that item up?
I make a motion to resume the regular agenda to discuss agenda item 25. Sorry.
I make a motion to resume the regular agenda regarding item 25-14.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. We are now on to item 25-14. Jason, do you have anything that you would like to state?
No, just what you've just heard, but happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
All right. Are there any questions, comments, concerns from the trustees? Wow. Okay. I will entertain a motion related to this, this item. You're looking for it here? No. It's a... Get creative. It's right in front of you, somewhere.
Not, not.
Would you like me to state it, and then somebody can just say something?
We want to, oh, a motion to approve it.
A motion to set the tax rate and what the tax rate amount will be.
I make a motion to set, to formally set the tax rate at 0.1728.
For fiscal 25.
For fiscal year 25.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? I have an item-- There's a motion and a second, is there further discussion, I have an item. Julie, our fiscal year '24 tax rate was .1908, right, like 19, something like that?
No, it was .1728.
For '24, what was the previous, previous tax rate to that, I think it was 19, 1908?
It was .1908.
.1908, okay, all right. Is there any further discussion related to this item? Seeing none, I will, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion passes. At this time, because of scheduling, like we mentioned before, I want to, I want to thank everybody for making this possible for us to have this meeting tonight based on schedules and, and some sickness and other things that are going on, so thank you all for, for being here. That's all the items that we have for tonight at the moment and I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at 7:25.